All right, I know Commissioner Davis and he's right out in the hall or close, so I will call the work session meeting to order. Glad to see everyone. I'd like Lieutenant Daniel to bring up the people wishing to speak. And I'd like to throw out the thank you officials as always, but I'm not making eye contact with anybody. So glad to have everyone here. It's an honor again to have Pastor Thomas Dixon from Mount Sinai Baptist Church lead us in our vacation and also our pledge and flatter. Thank you Pastor. Stand the grave.
Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. Father, please forgive us for our sins and our shortcomings today and thank you for our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Father, I pray that your divine favor will fall upon this meeting today and on each commissioner that is present. Bless them with your wisdom, knowledge, and power as they make decisions for this county. Lord, bless everyone that is present here today and bless Paulding County because we know that all power rests in your hands alone. May your presence always reside with this Board of Commissioners and may your presence always reside with Paulding County. Father, thank you for this day, for this hour, and for this moment. Please watch over us and keep us until we see each other again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again Pastor Dixon for being here.
Thank you. God bless you.
Had you. Please turn off your cell phones and minutes for the April 25th, 2017 work session and the regular meeting for the same date are available for your review. In our Positively Paulding segment, we have something to do here with water, so let's take a look at that.
With the growing season getting underway, residents and business are turning their attention to their landscapes. But at this time, the drought that began in 2016 still persists. While we've had rain for the last 11 out of 12 months, we have not received even an average amount of rainfall over the metro Atlanta region. So what does this mean for us? Well, while we're building the Richland Creek Reservoir and Water Treatment Plant, we still purchase all of our drinking water from the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority. So I ask Paulding County Water System customers to conserve our shared water resources that serve much of the Atlanta region's population. Please remain aware of the drought response level. We ask that you comply with any restrictions that are currently in place. You can find further information about current drought response levels and ideas on how to conserve water at paulding.gov, at northgeorgewater.org, and at epd georgia.gov/water-conservation.
Thank you Ms. Ashmore. I thought that was great and it's good to get that information. The Board of Commissioners recognizes the Paulding County Water Systems Staff receiving the Gold Award from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, GAWP, for compliance during 2016 at the copper mine and upper Sweetwater Facilities that achieved complete compliance with their NPDES ORLAS permits. And Ms. Ashmore is going to describe a little bit more of this for us, those are some acronyms that I need to learn, I guess.
Each year, the Georgia Association of Water Professionals recognizes plants that achieve full compliance with either their NPDES, which are their surface water discharge permits, or their land application system ORLAS permits. Each month, Water Systems Staff will measure the physical or chemical characteristics of the water leaving the facility. About 215 individual measurements are reported each month for determining compliance with the permit. Any single measurement could actually mean that we don't make that compliance with that permit during the course of the year. In developing our vision, mission, and values statements for the water system, one of the things that we had said at the end of last year was that we were striving to be award-winning. And so I'm really proud to bring staff here this morning to be recognized for receiving these gold awards at two of our three facilities. And in 2018, we hope to be back with all three. So would you like me to just call the names out of the people who are coming, who are going to join you?
I would Laura, and I've got the copper mine WRF, the copper mine WRF, the copper mine LAS, and the upper Sweetwater WRF. So I don't know if you want to do it any certain order.
Well, Russell Kelly is our Plant Operations Division Manager. Eric is here for Tim Pugh, our Lab Manager. John Pavel is the Superintendent of our Copper Mine Plant. Joel Norton is an Operator at our Copper Mine Plant. Todd Pierce in Maintenance at our Copper Mine Plant. Greg Parrow, who is our Operations Coordinator for the Upper Sweetwater Plant, and Brandon Fennell, who's an Operator at Upper Sweetwater.
I know. I forgave you already.
Thank you.
Well, we have some special invited guests this morning. I always enjoy being a part of the Advisory Board for Chattahoochee Technical College, the shortest distance from here. And this morning, we had Jason Tanner, the Vice President of Academic Affairs, and Ms. Quatina Pittman Howell, the Associate Dean of Nursing at Chattahoochee Technical College, along with Missy Cusack. So glad to have all of you all here. This is about information on the nursing program at Chattahoochee Technical College. And you all just let us know what award you just won that we're proud of.
Well, I think we're happy to have you all today this morning. On behalf of Dr. Mark Martin, our President, faculty and staff, glad to be here. Quatina Pittman Howell is the Associate Dean of Nursing and she's the Program Director of our ASN program right down the road where we train RNS. So I think it's best that she talk about that program.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. There's some great things going on at the college down the street at Paulding. We have currently 400 students that recently applied to come into the program for the fall. But one of the great things that recently happened is that we were ranked number five in the state of Georgia for associate, for nursing programs in general. So there's about 30 nursing programs in the state of Georgia and our program was ranked number five. And that has a lot to do with our pass rate and our retention of our nursing students. Half of our students are, live and work in Paulding County, and that's a great thing. And the same thing that's happening in the fall for our students that are coming in, about 400 of them applied and half of them live and work in Paulding. So there's a lot of great things going on and we're just happy to share that with you.
You all have been teaching nursing for how many years?
The program's about five years old and we recently located to Paulding County about two years ago.
Right.
Oh, and we're accredited by a national standard basin, which is a nursing profession organization. It's at a national level, so we're excited about that.
You have a lot of people come from outside of the county?
Yes, all the way from Jasper, north of Jasper 575 and south Fayetteville. So they're driving all distances to come to this program.
So have you had anybody look at it at Wellstar Hospital yet?
Yes, over half of our students are employed there once they get out of school. And actually, while they're in school, they're already seeking employment from nurse managers and coming up to them. We're tracking a lot of people getting employment within the Wellstar system. And we have a couple of their CEOs and nursing managers on our advisory board, so we have a great partnership with them. We recently established a partnership with Paulding County Health Department, so we'll be there in the fall and helping out in the county and doing some service learning and some community service events, so we're looking to get back to Paulding County.
So you're going to major in nursing and a minor in welding?
Oh, I'm not the welding guy. Tanner can tell you all about welding.
If I could, well, I will say, we had a heart attack out two weeks ago. We're going to expand welding program on Paulding campus. Right across the hallway, we have about a thousand square feet of usable space that's going to be retrofitted into an expansion of the welding lab. It will allow us greater capacity for most classes, probably six to 10 students at a time, to get capacity up almost 30 at a time in every class. We also had about 177 Paulding County residents who engaged in the move-already program this term, this spring semester that ends for us on Saturday. So those dual and roll high school students from Paulding County, about 150 of them actually come to the Paulding campus. So we're very happy about that partnership with Paulding County Schools. The students have really taken to legislative change and we're trying to welcome them on campus there. It's working out very, very well.
Well, Jason, Quatina, thanks so much for being here and giving us an update. Now we're privileged to have Mr. Wayne Strickland in the house to speak regarding Paulding Vet Life Community and the community information meeting scheduled for this coming Saturday, May 20th at 10:00 AM. Thank you Wayne for being here.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us be here. I just wanted to give you some information about a program that we're starting in Paulding County for our veterans. It's a, you know, it's a big issue, especially with a lot of these young men and women coming back from overseas and we're seeing some issues and we want to provide some help. So I brought Steve Schiffman with me. He's the Executive Director with Operation I've Forgotten of Vet Life Community, just to give you a little information on what we're doing.
I've had longer introductions, but thank you. Good morning. I appreciate the time to speak and I know I have a few minutes. I wanted to tell you about the veteran crisis in America. Unfortunately, the military numbers aren't accurate and while they report 22 suicides a day, it's well over 100. And men and women, women are about 13% of the military. And unfortunately, the way that they're taking their lives is unconventional as far as past theaters. We call it death by highway. Men and women are driving their vehicles into cement bridges and causing their suicide to look like an automobile fatality because it's the only way that they can leave money behind because it forces insurance companies to pay double indemnity. So it's very grisly and I could go on and on about female homelessness, veteran homelessness is unprecedented in America, et cetera. All that to say, we're a nonprofit, tax-exempt, all-volunteer organization and we're partnering with Bethany Christian Church and they've been generous enough to allow us to use their facility, their parsonage for our facility. And we're holding weekly meetings. Our meetings are going to start May 25th and Thursday at 6:30. And what I would ask of you is if you could inform your constituency for the materials and counseling are free. We don't counsel, we coach. We call it Vet Life Community because it's an actual community where veterans can form relationships and they have a platform to meet each other as they transition here. But at the heart of the community is a 12-step program written by veterans for veterans, which is the most vetted healing process over 100 years old. So we're real excited about that and we have posters there that you can see. And we would ask if you would help us, as I said, make the county aware of these free resources for veterans.
Very good.
My time is up?
As much time as you want, sir.
But it's, we have a program, we're starting for male veterans. We have a program for female veterans. We have a program for family members of veterans and as I understand it, we're the first in the country to have a program for children of veterans and with material and life coaching, et cetera. So I appreciate the time. I don't want to, any questions or?
I appreciate the time Stephen. I'm Todd Pownell. I think you and I have talked through some emails. I actually go to Bethany Christian Church.
Yes, sir.
Wayne there behind you is also one of our pastors there. And so Wayne, I appreciate you and your efforts with this. Something that's been discussed in a lot of different settings that we've had through the last few years. And I know Mr. Crowe's met with a lot of veterans and so I think it's a much needed time. I look forward to seeing what you guys can do with that. I think it'll be good for our community in any way we can help to do that. I know Mr. Crowe would be glad to come, you know, say a few words at one of your meetings. I'd be glad too, these other guys. But I just thank you for your efforts and what you're doing and we'll help you out any way we can. Maybe we can do something on our next, you know, Paulding post that we talk about and maybe we can kind of mention that and see what we can do to help you guys out.
Yeah, any exposure that you can gain for us would be greatly appreciated for our most deserved.
You're welcome. Thanks for your heart and your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a bag of that sent to us? That image map you don't have, please, please? You can do it. Okay, thanks, you're welcome.
There's also some flyers.
Oh, handouts in the bag for anybody interested about the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under vet awards, we have none. Under reports, committees, and departments, we get to hear from Ms. Ashmore again and give us an update on our ballot.
The Positively Paulding was a good segue this morning. We had to keep that very general because it had to span whatever conditions were changing, whether improving or worsening over time. So now we'll get into a little more of the details of where are we with our drought. Last Thursday's drought monitor, we are, Paulding County remains in a moderate drought condition based on rainfall, soil moisture, projected and forecast conditions. We are, we have improved dramatically from the last time I gave this update in January when we were in that extreme condition. Because of the rainfall and overall improvement, we have seen that extreme condition tightening up. Unfortunately, that's in the headwaters of the Chattahoochee Lanier system at this point and up in the headwaters of the Adler River system. So we are, we are still facing in North Georgia some drought conditions that affect our water supply. 73% of the metro region's water supply comes from the Chattahoochee River Basin. And sometimes we're a little, we seem a little disconnected from that, but through our connections with Cobb Marietta, that's where we get some of our water. And so Lanier seems a long way away, but it is, it is our, it is one of our primary sources of water today. Last week, Director Dunn, Director of Georgia EPD, commented that recent rains have provided short-term relief for your landscape, but not enough rainfall to provide significant improvement to Lake Lanier. We did see now two months over the last year where rainfall has exceeded the average. But that leaves 10 months that we have had less, lower than normal rainfalls in this region. Lake levels, we talked about, that's one of the big, the big things that we look at with drought. Lake Lanier, which releases water into the Chattahoochee, is about eight feet low, eight feet below its normal level. In the summer, it typically drops another six. So you can see the concern for these lower lake levels that we have. Another six puts us down into the conditions that we saw in the 2008, 2009 timeframe. So last week, APD did again just keep the community in a Level 2 drought. Anyone who receives water from that Chattahoochee Lanier system is in this Level 2 drought region because of only the slight improvement that we're seeing in the lake. And asking for citizens in our community to be good stewards of our water supply. Level 2 drought is the, is the twice-a-week allowable watering of our landscapes determined by your address. And then using good management practices so that it's done before 10:00 AM or after 2:00 PM. And so there are the even-numbered addresses are Wednesday and Saturday and odd-numbered addresses can water Thursday and Sunday. Some of the things that are prohibited are washing hard surfaces, water being used for ornamental purposes like fountains, the use of fire hydrants, except for fire hydrant, fire, fighting public safety, the non-commercial washing of vehicles. You can still use a commercial car wash, a non-commercial pressure washing, and fundraising car washes. So we are, we are actively enforcing our Level 2 drought response requirements at this time. Most of that has been in education. We have only issued one fine for a repeat violation of the drought response requirements. And most, and it's interesting because we are still, as a region, we are still facing getting that word out. There are just so many people that when we, when we talk with them, they have, they don't, they don't know that we're in a drought. I think some of that lies from the communities around us that have gone back to a Level 1 drought response, but Paulding County remains in that Level 2 drought response and will for the foreseeable future. There has been discussion of Level 3 because of the lake levels that you saw in the earlier slide. And that actually then prohibits landscape, general landscape irrigation, except for using a container watering or using a hand, the hose and sprayer. But to use an irrigation system or sprinklers under Level 3 is prohibited. So that's, that would be the next step should the, should conditions, should conditions warrant. Do you have any questions?
No questions? Thank you so much for having me. Under public participation in agenda items, we have no one who has signed up. Under Old Business, wait, I'm going to skip right over consent agenda. They are free consent agenda items. Number one, number one to adopt revised job classification, Traffic Operations Division Manager for DOT. Number two, declare listed items as surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. I can read all these out for records. Department of Tax Assessors, Unit 366 Car, 2001 Ford Focus, serial number 1FAFP36301W203158. The Fire Department, Unit 565, Engine 5, a 1995 Enter. And then the Water Department, Truck Unit 221, a 2002 Ford F-150, serial number 1FDWF37F82EB50251. And finally, a water truck, Unit 225, 2001 Ford F-150, serial number 1FDAF56F71ED23831. And item number three, approve the location agreement with Latfield Entertainment and authorize the Chairman to sign the agreements on behalf of Paulding County. That is a production company that will do some shooting here in Paulding County.
I'm going to say, the location that they want to shoot at is the landfill. That's why Mr. Wunder is nodding in the background. This came to us yesterday and so rather than have the Chairman sign that, because we have a meeting today, I asked that if we put on a consent agenda so that you'd all be aware that there would be a production company shooting at the landfill.
Are you going to be in it, Mr. Wunder?
No, sir.
Would any of the Commissioners like to move that to a regular business? Hearing none, leave it on the consent agenda and under Old Business, Discuss Action on 2017-05-C, application by Mr. Ray Bowden to rezone approximately 5.68 acres from R2, that suburban residential district, to B1, General Business District, for commercial, retail, and grocery store. The property is located in Land Lot 398, District 2, Section 3, on the north side of Macklin Road, west of State Route 92, AKA Hiram Mackworth Highway, at 3479 Macklin Road and 3529 Macklin Road. It's in Post 1. This was tabled from the April 25th, 2017 Board Commissioners Meeting and Ms. Lippman and Mr. Robinson have lightened support. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. This particular application was, of course, heard by the Plant Commission on April 25th and it's 14 stipulations. At that time, that was present, agreed to knows, and then there was questions at the Board Meeting regarding possibly extending the buffer in rear from 25 feet to 40 feet with a prospect of fines on that side. And this is our advocate which we can ask questions.
Mr. Bowden, thank you for being here.
So Mr. Bowden, I guess the question arose during the discussion of the item in the last meeting about the buffer between this property, which would then be business, and the residential properties that border it. There's a 25-foot, a 25-foot disturbed buffer required. The question that Mr. Pownell had asked was, is there, is there agreement on extending that possibly up to, say, 40? up to, say, 40 feet? The gentleman who was here on your behalf didn't want to commit to that without speaking to you, and so we're here now. So could you share your thoughts on that?
Well, the buffer that's required, of course, we met the requirement. And when you're trying to get somebody to come in here and put their contract on this, they want to have as much space as they can for whatever kind of building might go in there. And so they're reluctant to give away more land to the buffer. However, the other question they had was, would we be willing to put a fence across that side of the property to give them privacy and also dampening of the noise? And then the other question they had was, if this happened to end up being a Publix or a Kroger or whatever it could possibly be, I've been around a lot of Publix and Krogers, and those guys are real good at taking care of their waste and keeping it sealed and getting rid of it quickly. So there's not going to be any problem with odors any more than you might have in any other Publix you've been to, and I think you'll find that those are very good. So we'd be willing to put the fence up, and we'll be, of course, adamant about whoever moves in there taking good care of their refuge. But as far as giving back on the setbacks, we can't do that and still have a viable project.
What would be the reason why you couldn't go any more than the 25-foot? Is it space issues, parking lot issues?
When you bring in a player of scale of a Kroger, a Walmart, a Publix, whoever it might be, they want to be able to put a certain-sized building in, and they have different sizes to fit different lots and different locations. So if they choose to put in the one that we've got here, it's like 45,000 square feet, then they also require the developer to put in a certain amount of square footage of retail space to buffer that space of theirs to bring traffic in. And so we're already tight on the amount of space they're going to require. We'd probably have to shrink down the big buildings to get enough extra retail space in there to make them happen. And another question is for parking. And we're tight on parking also because we're planning to use two acres on the corner, and we're going to have to push some of the parking over into that corner lot just to get enough parking to satisfy them and still put a little bit of retail space in there to satisfy the tenant. So bottom line is, we're tight right now. We can't give away anymore. As long as we're meeting the requirements, we can't give away anymore. We'd be more than happy to try to put anything up there to make the people, you know, get less noise and get less sight of what's going on behind them. I think that's a good compromise on our part.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here today, and at the 21400 meeting, we will vote on it. And under new business, discuss action to approve the agreement with the city of Hiram to conduct the city elections and authorize the chairman to execute the agreements. Ms. Skipper's going to brief us on this.
Ms. Holden is not here today, and she apologized for that, but she asked me to speak on these. This is the same form of the agreement that we've had in the past with the city of Hiram to conduct their elections. Our board of elections and our superintendent of elections will be doing that for the city, and then the city reimburses us the cost.
Excuse me, I got a question. When you guys were dealing with the Macklin Road 92, as far as... The reason why I'm asking is because that's what I'm here for. Were you guys asking if we had any questions for him? Or?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to...
It's all right.
Thank you.
If you're able to see, excuse me just a second. I'm sorry. That... Sir, that's in the district that I represent. So after, we're going to... We will adjourn for executive session here in a minute, but if you want to speak really quickly before we go to executive session, I'd be delighted.
Perfect, thank you.
It's always good to have the better-looking representative from the staff for DOT. George, thank you for being here. That's the conclusion of regular business. There is executive session for real estate litigation and personnel, and there is no one who has signed up earlier for public participation in non-agenda items. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just before we make that motion, if I could have just a minute. My grandfather is 90 years old today. He watches our meetings online, and so I just wanted to say happy birthday to my grandfather in Lee County, South Carolina. And I would like to make a motion that we do into executive session for real estate, litigation and personnel.
Here's your second.
Second.
Motion in a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned for executive session. Call the work session back to order, and there was no action taken in the executive session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sir?
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Our work session is adjourned.